I don't disagree.
And welcome to our Board of Supervisor meeting for April. We are happy to have everyone here. And the first thing we need to do is come out of closed session. Be it resolved that to the best of each board member's knowledge, only public business matters lawfully exempt from open meeting requirements, and only such matters as were identified in the motion to go into closed session were heard, discussed, or considered during the closed session. May I have a roll call vote, please?
Yes.
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 Thank you all. We are out of closed session.
Madam Chair, I think just for the clarity of the record, that motion included also the motion to come out of closed session. It was at the motion to come out as well as the certification. We're all in one.
Thank you. We will begin our meeting with a pledge of allegiance and then followed by a moment of silence. Mr. Quentin, would you lead us, please?
Please rise with me. I pledge allegiance to the republic, states, America, and to the republic which stands on nation under God, indivisible, eternal, infinite, and eternal.
I would like now to invite us all to observe a moment of silence where we consider our community, our decisions, and all that we can do to make the best of those decisions and to support the community. So let us now enter a moment of silence. Thank you. Our first agenda item today will be introductions. If I could have Mr. Mormon come forward, please. He will be doing three introductions and then Mr. Hinkle will follow.
Thank you, Madam Chairman, members of the board. It's a real pleasure to be with you today and to recognize, I'd like to take liberty and recognize actually four folks, if I may. The first is Tom Edwards. He's our new Director of Maintenance. Tom comes with us with over 30 years of experience in facilities management. Most recently, he worked as Director of Facilities and Construction for Fall Creek County Public Schools. And I believe you were with the school division 19 years, 21 years, sorry, 21 years. He brings a broad base of knowledge in facilities and maintenance, and leading and managing projects as well as leading teams and creating teams. So we're really thrilled to have him. He started work with us on April 7th and just really excited to have him leading that group and helping us out into the future. Secondly, I'd like to introduce Cody Ryan. Cody began work with us on March 17th as a maintenance tech two. Cody's a journeyman electrician. He's working on his master electrician certification. And he came to us most recently after working as an electrician for a private contractor within the region for approximately eight years or so with them, about eight and a half. And so we're thrilled to have him. He's the first journeyman electrician that we've had on staff, and so we're pleased to have him join us. Thirdly, Mr. John Kravitz. John comes to us into the position of grounds technician. If I reviewed his material right, he has about 10 years of experience in landscaping and groundskeeping as well as maintenance. And he started with us on March 10th and has proven to be a great addition to our team. So we'd like to welcome all of those. And then I would also like to extend gratitude and appreciation to Blake Wyman. Blake has worked with the department seven, how many years? Six, seven years in various capacities. He was just promoted to ground supervisor before we tapped him to serve as interim director upon the departure of the previous director. So he served that role since January, into December, January, and will continue to fill that through the end of this month when he'll transition back into more normal duties. But he saw us through that period of time and tremendous leadership and help in the department and seeing us through that period and keeping everything on track. And just can't say enough good things about him and how he stepped up to the plate and what he's done for us. And so we're just excited about continuing to see great things out of him and just want to express appreciation to him for his service. So thank you all very much.
Thank you all very much. Gary, Gary.
Good afternoon, Madam Chair, members of the board. My name's Matt Hinkle. I'm your emergency communications systems manager. I'm proud to introduce you today to Jonathan Boggs, who started with the county as our emergency communications radio systems technician. We probably need to find some smaller titles. Anyway, Jonathan started with us on March 24th. He's a native of Bodatot. Actually, his father also worked for the county, served with the sheriff's office for about a decade, and also volunteered with Troutville and Eagle Rock. Jonathan also followed in his footsteps and volunteers at Buchanan currently, but he also was with Troutville as well. So we're really excited to have him on board. He's got great energy, great aptitude, and he's going to be a great member of the communications team. So please welcome Jonathan Boggs.
Thank you very much. Welcome, Jonathan. Thank you for your volunteer work as well. Now we do have a walk-on item. We're going to have Agenda Item E. And I'm going to ask Mr. Lurid to lead us in that.
Madam Chair and board members, come to you with mixed feelings today in that it was the last closed session for a member of our team. Not the last day, but the last closed session that he'll be here. Ken McFadden was named the county administrator over in Allegheny County. And so he'll be heading in that direction a little north of us in the near future. And I think Melanie, his wife, is here today, and we certainly do appreciate her coming to support Ken and also make mention of his son Connor and also his daughter Sarah. Sarah's at JMU and Connor's in the Bodatot County School System. So certainly do appreciate the work of Ken over the past years. He came to us in July the 18th, on July the 18th of 2016. And Madam Chair, I have a resolution that I would like to read, and then if the board would adopt, that would be appropriate, I think. Resolution and recognition of Mr. Ken McFadden. Whereas the Bodatot County Board of Supervisors wants to recognize our friend and colleague, Director of Economic Development for Bodatot County, Mr. Kenneth T. McFadden. And whereas Ken earned his master's degree in public administration from Appalachian State University, where he also earned his undergraduate degree in history, and he also earned a master's degree in American history from Emory and Henry University. And whereas Ken became his, began his journey in Bodatot County on July the 18th of 2016 as the Director of Economic Development. Ken has over 25 years of experience in local government administration and economic development, including seven years as the Executive Director of the Blue Ridge Crossroads Economic Development Authority, which serves Grayson County, the City of Galax, and Carroll County, and has also held previous positions in North Carolina County and Town Management. And whereas in 2018, he served as President of the Virginia Economic Developers Association and has worked closely with the Virginia Economic Development Partnership, the Virginia General Assembly, and previous governors administrations. And whereas during the tenure in Bodatot County, seven companies have announced their decisions to locate or expand in the county with approximately 1,000 new jobs and 185 million in capital investment. And whereas Ken has also been a strong advocate for small business, helping them grow and thrive, and his work with the universal broadband installation and support of remote workers has also been recognized at the state and regional levels. And whereas Ken is an Eagle Scout and a former Rotary Club president. And whereas Ken and his wife Melanie have raised their family right here in Bodatot County, where they enjoy hiking, camping, and photography. And whereas we are proud to announce that Ken will be assuming the role of county administrator in our neighboring jurisdiction, Allegheny County. He will be greatly missed, and we are thankful for all he has done while serving in Bodatot County. Now, therefore, be it resolved that the Bodatot County Board of Supervisors does hereby recognize Mr. Ken McFadden for his dedicated service to the citizens and business of Bodatot County on the 22nd day of April 2024. So.
Madam Chair. We have a motion to approve?
Aye.
And we have a second. Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Happy to say and sad to say that that motion carries. And? Come on down here.
Ken, would you like to say anything? This one hasn't been signed yet. They just passed it. We'll get it to you.
Thank you. I am surprised. Now I understand why Melanie is here. Truly, I had no idea why this particular meeting she would attend, but now I do. Thank you. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Thank you, Ken. It's been a pleasure. I think few people that I know have the love of the natural world that Ken McFadden does. He is so respectful of our beauty in this region. And I think it's also, it's doubly appropriate that this happens on earth, they can. So as you are enjoying your commute to Allegheny and your trip out west to celebrate this accomplishment, just remember how much we have learned from you and how much we have grown with you, and we wish you the very, very, very best. Thank you. We will now move on to Agenda Item Three. This is our citizen comment period for items that are specific to the agenda. Do I have anybody, no public comments? Anyone want to have a comment on an agenda item? Thank you. Ms. Davis, we will ask you to come down now, and we will go through Items Four and Five. Our approval of transfers and additional appropriations will be first, followed by approval of accounts payable and ratification of the short accounts payable list.
Good afternoon, Madam Chair and members of the board. For the month of April, there were no transfer requests. There were seven pass-through appropriations. The first is to appropriate funds to the jail related to medical reimbursements and social security incentives. The second is to appropriate funds to dispatch for contract payments. The next item is to appropriate funds to the sheriff's office related to miscellaneous reimbursements, fees, overtime for security, and contract payments. Two are appropriations to the libraries for donations received and friends of the library funds. One appropriation is to Parks and Recreation for a donation received for the purchase of a portable pool. And the last is an appropriation of donated funds to the sheriff's community outreach program. And finally, there are no regular appropriations for the month. So it is requested that these transfers and appropriations be approved by the board. Are there any questions I can answer at this time?
Any questions for Ms. Davis? Motion to approve? And a second? Any discussion? Hearing none. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? That is approved and passed. If you would move on to Agenda Item Five, please.
Sure. So total expenditures being requested for approval for April is $2,532,119.76. A few notable disbursements included in that. The first is about $78,000 for fire EMS, paid to Striker for a powered ambulance cot. $100,000 to Bodatot County Health Department for the fourth quarter local commitment as part of our required agreement. And about $95,000 for the Bodatot County Museum Phase II work. Any questions that I can answer?
Any questions on this agenda item? Do I have a motion for approval?
Aye.
We have a motion and a second. Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? That motion passes, and we'll see you in a few minutes. Don't go far. Thank you. Next, we'll invite down Mr. Blevins with VDOT. Thank you very much for being here, as always.
Good afternoon. Thank you for having me. For our update this month, there were, like I said, we're starting on our resurfacing contracts. I don't think they've started paving in Bodatot yet. No traffic engineering work orders that I'm aware of, that we have requests that are going through. Several land development projects that we have underway. Be happy to answer any questions about those. 14 permits issued over the last month. Our intersection improvement project here at International Parkway is underway. I see they're actually doing some final striping out there. The approximate completion date's May, which is next month. It looks like they're on track for that. The Hunter's Green, the full-depth reclamation project, the pre-con that we had for that scheduled last month was rescheduled. It will be tomorrow. They are still moving forward with it. The contractor still has it, but we just haven't actually started the process to get them going on, you know, giving them notice to proceed or with the actual like pre-construction meeting. Shouldn't be any issues with that, but just letting you know where we are. Fringer Trail, the rural rustic was paved about three weeks ago. We did that in-house. We basically could not find a contractor to do that, so we took a rented chip spreader and some of our staff from around our area and completed that on our own, along with one in each of the other counties that I represent. As far as planned maintenance work, we're still grading gravel roads, cleaning up from storm debris in some places, although Bodatot's mostly done. We're getting a lot of questions about dust mitigation on several of the roads. Beyond that, we are focusing on potholes and that type of just typical like spring maintenance items and staying ahead of those paving schedules. Before they get here, we do like to make sure those roads are patched out before they get here so the contractor can move through quickly and get everything done. Is there anything that I can help any of you with today? Any questions for me?
Thank you so much for that. Supervisor Michael?
We're good in Blue Ridge. Thank you.
Very good. Thank you.
Supervisor Nicely?
Yes, appreciate you answering real quick on the gentleman's question about Dagger Springs. I did have somebody ask me if we would mention, like Brew's Mill Road, there's a lot of tractor trailers starting to cut through there. And I think they were wanting to, maybe it was qualified to get one of the, you know, don't trust the GPS routing.
Okay. Okay. I can check on that. I know we've talked about that road several times since it connects to 220 and 81. So you're talking about not recommended for GPS, something like that.
Thank you. Everything else is good.
Supervisor Clinton?
I will just ask as a follow-up, any action on the dilapidated and deserted service stations at exit 150? Did we talk about maybe getting them removed?
Yes, they are planned to be removed with the project since we purchased those. The last update that I have, based on what the contractor is saying, is April 2026. It'd be about a year from now. It's obviously not on their, not on their critical path because they need to start working on 81 and of course start getting things shifted for that and getting work, starting to work on the bridges. Today, they're still working on just subsurface borings and things to make sure their design is going to be adequate. But the plan right now is April 2026.
Okay, thank you.
You're good?
Even better.
Many thanks from Fringer Trail. I've already heard from residents. That is fantastic to have that project completed. We do have one drainage issue on Frontage Road just north of the bridge across 81 at exit 168.
Okay.
And when we get rain, when it storms, we're getting some flooding in lawns, in yards. I can send you some pictures if you would like, if you could take a look.
That'd be helpful. May just be a clogged pipe or something, or maybe one needs to be replaced. We'll be happy to take a look at it.
I'll get you some pictures.
That'd be great. Thank you.
Anything else for Mr. Blevins? Thank you all very much.
Thank you.
Now we would like to invite down Dr. Rogers and hear a presentation on our Department of Social Services. And I think this is your first presentation. Again, reiterate our welcome to you. We're so happy that you're here. We look forward to hearing what you, what you're going to tell us today and all the great things you're going to do. Thank you.
Mr. Precious. Okay, all right. Good afternoon, Madam Chair and members of the board. My name is Dr. Raquel Rogers. I am the Director of Bodatot County, Virginia Department of Social Services. I'm very grateful to be standing before you today to present to all of you on the resources, key resources, and our purpose of serving the Bodatot County residents here in Daleville, Virginia. The agenda for today will consist of fast facts, our staff, our overview of our agency, Family Services Department, our Benefit Programs Department, and lastly, how to connect with us. Currently, we serve 17,836 residents in our Family Services and Benefit Programs. The average monthly amount of issuance to those residents totals 296,800, and we are still counting. Gratefully, last quarter, we were able to help 236 families with energy-related matters where some of those families received much-needed heat pumps installed in their homes to stay warm during the winter months. The Family Services Unit. Currently, we have three divisions at our agency who are ready to serve the Bodatot County community Monday through Friday, 8:00 a.m. to 4:30 p.m. Like Bodatot County core values, we too are dedicated to integrity, excellence, respect for others, respect for the past and the future, accountability, and loyalty. Out of those three divisions at our agency, we have the Administration Department, Family Services, and Benefit Program Teams. Because we are a non-deviating agency, it's important to state that we adhere to the policies and procedures outlined in the Virginia Department of Social Services Administrative Manual while being state-supervised and locally administered by our appointed DSS Board. The Bodatot County Administrative DSS Board consists of Board of Supervisor Walter Michael, Bunny Henderson, Sue Sweet, Patsy Dickerson, Donna Henderson, and Billy Moran. We meet monthly together for collaboration as well as updates on our agency. The Family Services Unit are one of those divisions that is discussed at those monthly meetings with the DSS Board such as Child Protective Services, Adult Protective Services, Foster Care, Adoption, and Recruitment of Resource Homes. The goal of Protective Services is to prevent further maltreatment, assure safety, and maintain stability for families in Bodatot County, which I'll discuss in later slides. The Family Services Unit is a range of specialized services designed to assist families who are unable to safely care for their children, adults, and the elderly population. It incorporates identification, assessment, investigation, and treatment of the abused and neglected. A few key resources we are connected to are the Angel Tree Program, Juvenile Domestic Relations Court, Law Enforcement, Bodatot Resource Center, the Blue Ridge Behavior Healthcare, the Greater Workforce of Roanoke Valley, and many more. Within the Family Services Unit, we have the Child Protective Services. In this service, we facilitate services to children and families and support and strengthen those families. When our office receives a report of maltreatment, we respond to valid reports within three response timeframes. That's 24, 48, or 40 work hours. Then the investigative, sorry, excuse me, the investigative process. A case may be transferred to the In-Home Services Unit for further work with the family. Within this unit, children may be placed in a least restrictive environment while the department works with the family to help strengthen it. If the family is transferred to the Permanency Unit, the department works with the court system to develop a court order plan with the family to ensure safety and well-being. Currently, we have eight children within our permanency unit. Our Resource Family Homes are a significant part of what we do while the family may be working a plan to ensure safety, well-being, and permanency. The department receives support from those resource homes because they provide stable and safe homes while we are working with the family. I do want to take this time for recruitment and to just state that we currently have three resource homes. And as you can understand, we are in dire need of more resource homes. If you're a Bodatot County community member and is interested in becoming a resource home, feel free to stop by our agency for more information. The Bodatot County Virginia Department of Social Services Benefit Program consists of Medicaid Supplemental Nutritional Assistance Program, better known as SNAP, Temporary Assistance for Needy Families, better known as TANF, Virginia Initiative of Education Work, better known as VIEW, Child Care and Energy Assistance. The Benefit Program aims to help the vulnerable population of the Bodatot County to gain economic and self-sufficiency. When a resident comes to our office for help, they not only receive the need, but also are connected to resources within the county that specifically helps sustain the livelihood so that they can reach self-sufficiency, economic and self-sufficiency. The Bodotot County Supplemental Nutritional Assistance Program, or SNAP, combats the hunger cycle for providing families who are in need of temporary solutions. Additionally, our staff is focused on helping to be that solution to ensure families in the Bodotot County are connected to the Bodotot Farmers Market, which is located in Daleville, the Daleville Town Center on Saturdays from 8:00 a.m. to 12:30. And we are so excited to be connected with them because we're seeing a lot of success with sending our members there. For the Temporary Assistance of Needy Families and the Virginia Initiative of Education and Work, better known as VUE, the program goals are to offer Bodotot residents living in poverty opportunity to achieve economic independence by removing barriers of work, provide positive incentives for work, provide skills necessary for self-sufficiency, allow families living in poverty to contribute to their own self-sufficiency, and of course, obtain work. Virginia's two medical assistance programs are Medicaid and the Family Access to Medical Insurance Security Plan, better known as FAMIS. Collectively, these programs are referred to as a medical assistance. The medical programs pay medical service providers for medical services rendered to eligible county residents. The determination of eligibility for medical assistance is the responsibility of local departments of the social services and also is under the supervision of Virginia Department of Social Services. And lastly, within the Benefit Program is childcare. The overarching goal is to improve reasonable access to high-quality, affordable childcare options for eligible families, ultimately improving children's school readiness for kindergarten. Currently, we have eight families enrolled in childcare. However, we have several families that are, that are still on that waiting list. On behalf of the Department of Social Services, Bodotot County, I'd like to say a special thanks to Gary LaRue, the County Administrator, David Mormon, Deputy County Administrator, all of the Department of Social Services Board, Walt, Bunny, Sue, Billy, Patsy, and Donna, all county staff and its departments for the support and guidance you've provided to this agency and thus far. We appreciate you. Thank you. Any questions?
Thank you so much, Dr. Rogers. That's an awful lot of alphabet soup there. A lot of acronyms. Thank you. You laid it out really well. Any questions for Dr. Rogers?
Thank you.
On TA and SNAP as two examples. Those are federally mandated, I think, aren't those?
Yes, sir. They are. They fall under the Benefit Programs. Yes, we do receive federal money, money for those.
I'm sorry.
We do receive federal money, money for those programs.
That flows down through the Commonwealth and the Commonwealth Deals Directive and the county. Is that right?
That is correct. So as far as, so 85% of that money that we receive, and I'll go back to the slide. So we receive 85% from the state and federal and then 15.5% from the county, which is local funds. Is it? I'm sorry.
Other questions?
I don't have a question, but I have a comment. We also need to compliment on your team-building skills that you're implementing. That's great work. Thank you.
Thank you.
You have some team here today, don't you?
We do. We do. I have Ms. Eve Bromine. She's our supervisor for the Benefits Program. I have Ms. Carolyn Kemper. Sorry, Carolyn Kemper. She's our fraud investigator. And Ms. Bunny Henderson, she's our, she sits on our board, the SSS Board.
Patsy.
And Ms. Patsy Dickerson. She's also here as well.
Thank you so much. Any other questions? Well, we thank you and again, welcome. We're happy to have you on board and appreciate the updates that you've provided today. Thank you.
Thank you. Thank y'all.
Our next agenda item, I will ask Mr. Bowles and/or Mr. Lewis to come down. I think we've got Mr. Bowles. For item eight, our resolution regarding Building Safety Month.
Good afternoon, Madam Chair and members of the board. Thank you for your time. Building Safety Month is sponsored by the International Code Council. To remind the public about the critical role our communities largely unknown protectors of public safety are local code officials who assure us of safe, sustainable, and affordable buildings that are essential to our prosperity. Game On, the theme of Building Safety Month 2025 encourages all, all of us to get involved and raise awareness about building safety on personal, local, and global scales. Each year in observance of Building Safety Month, people all over the world are asked to consider the commitment to improve building safety, resilience, and economic investment at home and in the community, and to acknowledge the essential services provided to all of us by local and state building departments, fire prevention bureaus, federal agencies, in protecting lives and property. I would ask that you consider the proclamation before you also recognizing the month of May as Building Safety Month here in Bodotot County.
Thank you very much. Shall we read the proclamation?
I'll read it if you'd like. I just, essence of time. That was a brief, brief.
That was a brief overview.
I can, I'm happy to do it if you would like me to.
Okay, so we have the resolution in front of us. We will give everybody a minute to, to take a look at that. And then if I could have a motion to approve.
So moved.
We have a motion and a second. Any discussion?
Can you fill us in on the Game On program?
I'm sorry, I didn't hear.
Can, can you fill us in on the Game On program? Any idea what kind of participation we'll get?
So we're in the early planning stages still. Might say necessarily early. We're in the planning stages of a possible event here on the, to join in with the Game On to do some code update education, not necessarily training that would be continuing edge that is required by contractors to have, but just to update the residential changes to the code to allow homeowners to come out and see that and also possibly, and for the contractors. So, so it's, it's basically five weeks. As you can see on the screen, week one is, and I apologize, allergies are killing, killing me. The warm-up is discover how the building safety impacts our daily life, including the places where we work, learn, and play. And week two is building your offense. Create a plan to actively support building safety programs in your community. Week three, build your defense. Stay prepared for natural disasters or natural hazards such as severe weather, wildfires, earthquakes, and more. Week four, the starting lineup, meet building safety professionals and learn about rewarding careers in building safety. That's something we're kind of working on. See what's, week five, going into overtime, see what's next for the building safety industry, including global trends, artificial intelligence, and more. There's been some, a video prepared, I think that'll be out on our social media, and different highlights that will hit of these five weeks on the website.
Is it in-person or is it virtual?
So you'll be able to go to our website and, and interact and see what's going on. And we are working on social media and, forget that, the website and the Facebook and social, other social medias. Tiffany's got us taken care of there. And we're hoping to be able to put together an in-person event. We're still trying to get some commitments lined up on that. So we're, we'll stay tuned for more. As soon as we know for sure, we'll have it out there.
And in our infographic video that we're doing, we worked really closely with Mark and with Matt Lewis to just tell some differences in the code. So it's basically where now you're going to be adopting the 2021. I always get it confused.
The 2021 is the current code that was January 18th. It's always four, it's three years behind. So we're, they adopt the 2021 in 2024, and it goes in effect in 2025. And it's, it's a mess. It's hard for us to keep up. So it's always, it appears to be one code cycle behind, but that's to allow for the changes that are necessary. So we're working on that. We're updating our forms. We're trying to, we're working on a new software program that you all I'm sure are aware of that'll help us with the permitting and try to be more interactive, real-time with, with folks.
Start to make it a little easier between the contractors and developers as well as our DIY folks. So our home builders, our homeowners that just want to, want to put a deck or an addition on. So we're hoping that this infographic video is really going to help just give a lot of plain speak and then actually be able to, to send folks over to talk to anybody in community development to get further answers, but just trying to make it a little simpler. Because sometimes it can be really, it's a little scary for me when I go out there. So I want to make sure that people, so that, that's kind of going to be the goal for that. So they're teaching me a lot this.
And I don't want to leave Jess out. She's been very involved in this.
On my team. She's back part-time. So she is making things look pretty. That, so she's making things look really good and working really hard at the, the marketing and social media for that. So, thank you.
Other discussion? Yeah, I think we have a motion and a second. All in favor? Any opposed? That motion passes.
Thank you.
Thank you so much. Our next agenda item is number nine. This will be, this will include a public hearing to consider and receive comment on a proposed ordinance to authorize a one-time bonus in fiscal year 2026 for state and locally-supported employees of constitutional officers, offices, the Electoral Board, Department of Social Services, and Board of Supervisors consistent with action taken by the 2025 Virginia General Assembly. So we'll hear a presentation first, and then I'll open the public hearing.
Well, you basically covered it, Madam Chairman. Thank you. This is action to basically implement that taken by the General Assembly for, for state, for state and locally-funded state employees. The Board's Budget Subcommittee recommended, and it was advertised in the budget to provide funding for this for constitutional office and county employees, as you noted. State law requires that localities can only provide bonuses if they hold a public hearing and enact a ordinance authorizing those bonuses. So that's the purpose of the action today. Be happy to try to answer any questions you have. Mr. Lockaby is, of course, very familiar with this. Ms. Davis, of course, will be the one along with HR to implement it. But if you have any questions, we'd be happy to try to field those in advance to the public hearing.
Thank you. Do we have any questions for Mr. Mormon at this time? Okay, I'm going to open the public hearing. Is there anyone from the public here who would like to speak or ask questions that Mr. Mormon can answer? Seeing none, I will close the public hearing. Any discussion from the board? Do I have a motion to approve?
I move for approval.
Second.
We have a motion and a second. Any discussion? All in favor? Any opposed? That motion passes. Thank you very much, Mr. Mormon. Our next item, number 10, will be to consider approval of the FY26 Bodotot County General Budget and Tax Rates. Ms. Davis will lead us through this agenda item.
Good afternoon again. I am very excited to bring this agenda item before you today. So this is for the Board's consideration and adoption of the fiscal year 2025, 2026 budget and tax rates for Bodotot County. The total proposed budget for operations, capital, debt service, and funding to Bodotot County Public Schools is 146.9 million. Obviously, that's a rounded number. I can give you the precise one, but it is on the attachment as well. This represents a 2.1% increase from the prior year's budget for both revenues and expenditures. The recommended budget for Bodotot County Public Schools, which is also included in that total figure I just gave, is 80.5 million and represents a 0.7% increase from the prior year budget. With regard to the tax levies, there are no proposed changes to the tax rates for fiscal year 2026. Both the proposed budget and the tax rates were advertised in the Finn Castle Herald on March 26th and April 2nd, and a public hearing was held on April 9th to discuss that as well. So there are two recommended items for this agenda. The first is that the Board adopt the tax rate resolution as proposed, and the second is to adopt the budget approval resolution as presented. So are there any questions I can answer at this time?
Any questions for Ms. Davis? So I think I will do this in two parts.
Correct.
The first part, do I have a motion for the tax rate as, the tax rates as proposed?
So moved.
Second.
We have a motion and a second to adopt the tax rates as proposed and advertised? Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? That motion passes. The second item, I will ask for a motion to approve the Bodotot County General Budget as advertised and proposed? We have a motion and a second to approve the general budget as advertised and proposed? Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? That motion also passes. Thank you, Ms. Davis, again, for all your work, the material. I know I have met with multiple constituents over the past month or so. I took the hand out with me that you had prepared, that you presented April 9th at the hearing. Really helpful. Your work has been, I think, spectacular.
Thank you so much. Appreciate it.
A few comments that are not, not relevant to whether we passed or didn't pass that motion, but I'm kind of a, I have a soft spot for statistics, I guess, and percentages especially. And percentages put things in, I think, in, in the perspective. And the thing about this budget is it's, it's big, you know, 146,000, total million, I mean, total. And you kind of get lost in the size of the numbers. Katie mentioned a couple of them, but just as kind of a recap. At a time when we're concerned about spending, the total county budget increase was 2.1%, which, you know, the county's growing and to increase the budget no more than 2%, I think is, is notable. For the schools, the county contribution to the schools constitutes an 8% increase, and the county contributions to its own operating fund, basically the day-to-day operations of the county increased 4%. So those, I just think they're numbers that, they reflect things going correctly, in my opinion, in the county, and then reflects appropriate restraint on spending. Just, I just wanted to say that.
Thank you for observation. I appreciate that. And again, I want to acknowledge the work of Chairman Clinton and Chairman Michael on the Budget Subcommittee and Chairman Nicely and, and Michael on the School Board Task Force. So we have a lot of input, and I concur with you. In this time of increases, we, we need to be very judicious in every spending that we undertake. And I think your numbers put that in perspective. So thank you for that. Other comments? Wonderful. Thank you. Ms. Pendleton, if you would come down, please, for the next two items. First, we have the designation of the Deputy Zoning Administrator and Deputy Subdivision Agent.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Board members, I don't know if you saw that, but the Director of Community
Thank you, Madam Chair. Board members, I don't know if you saw that, but the Director of Community Development, Director of Finance cannot fist bump appropriately, but hats off to Katie for all of that and your work as well. This request is to appoint a Deputy Subdivision Agent and Deputy Zoning Administrator to undertake those actions in my absence. And so that request would be to appoint John McCoy in those roles effective today. And I'll take any questions. Thank you for your consideration.
Any questions on the agenda item before us? Do I have a motion to accept the nomination of John McCoy for both of these positions? We have a motion?
Second.
Motion and a second. Any discussion? All in favor? Any opposed? Congratulations, Mr. McCoy. That motion passes. And next item is consideration of zoning ordinance amendments to incorporate food trucks.
Well, Madam Chair, this one might not go as, as quickly, just because zoning is complicated sometimes. I will let you know that, you know, as we all know and are aware from our daily life outside of our work, that we know that the requests for food truck services have increased, you know, just about everywhere. And last month, the Planning Commission did bring that up and wanted to seek impact from the board regarding the initiation of staff work for an amendment to the text of the ordinance to allow mobile permit, permit, mobile dining based on staffing capacity and resources. And so really even over the amount of time or the amount of years that we can think that we've seen food trucks going around, like they've changed. We've had, you know, requests for food trucks and, you know, historic vehicles and school buses and all kinds of things. And I know that we continue to, to see that evolve. And so I'm not even sure food trucks is the right word in today's environment. Given that, you know, there is some attention and information that, that needs to undergo what a comprehensive assessment of that would look like and make sure that really a recommendation on, on the ordinance being amended and what zoning districts that might be, whether that would be a by right or special exception use, how they should be defined and what, if any supplemental regulations would be appropriate, is a, is a, been a item on our task list, not yet authorized, but along with many other ordinance amendments. As you know, we've been working very diligently to update the comprehensive plan. We do have some other authorized amendments that you have asked us to consider that we've not yet been able to bring to public hearing. And we also have the fee schedule updates and software implementation on our plates right now. I only bring that up just to, to let you know that we continue to have a pretty full plate for 2025. And then we were expecting that we would consider following the, all of those tasks being completed, the comprehensive review of the zoning ordinance in early 2026. And so at your, with any questions to answer and at your discretion, we'd like to move forward with kind of putting that on the work plan, again, as capacity and time permits us to do that. Thank you.
Any questions or discussion regarding the authorization to continue to look at these amendments on food trucks?
I definitely think we need to address.
Got questions?
Second.
We have a motion and a second to concur with the Planning Commission's request to authorize work on this amendment or potential amendment. Any further discussion? All in favor? Any opposed? You have another item to, on your to-do list. Congratulations.
With pleasure. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Chief Ferguson, if you would make your way down, please. We would like for you to share with us the Emergency Medical Services Week proclamation.
Good afternoon, Madam Chair, members of the board. Thanks for having me today. I am excited to be able to present this proclamation to you today after having come from lunch and in meeting with the Virginia Office of EMS's new director, as well as the CEO for the Virginia Department of Health, to talk about EMS and the future of EMS and how that works in Southwest Virginia and the Commonwealth as a whole. So that being said, our proclamation before you is declaring the week of May 18th through the 24th of this year as Emergency Medical Services Week. And I'll read it for you. Whereas Emergency Medical Services is a vital public service, and whereas the members of the Emergency Medical Services teams are ready to provide lifesaving care to those in need 24 hours a day, seven days a week, and whereas access to quality emergency care dramatically improves the survival and recovery rate of those who experience sudden illness or injury, and whereas Emergency Medical Services fills healthcare gaps by providing important out-of-hospital care, including preventative medicine, follow-up care, and access to telemedicine, and whereas the Emergency Medical Services system consists of first responders, emergency medical technicians, paramedics, emergency medical dispatchers, firefighters, police officers, educators, administrators, pre-hospital nurses, emergency nurses, emergency physicians, trained members of the public, and other out-of-hospital medical care providers, and whereas the members of Emergency Medical Services teams, whether career volunteer, engage in thousands of hours of specialized training and continuing education to enhance their lifesaving skills, and whereas it is appropriate to recognize the value and the accomplishments of Emergency Medical Services providers by designating the Emergency Medical Services Week. Now therefore be proclaimed that the Board of Supervisors of Bodotoc County do hereby proclaim the week of May 18th through 24th, 2025, as Emergency Medical Services Week. This is the 51st anniversary of EMS Week, and this year's theme is EMS Week: We Care for Everyone, and encourage the community to observe and participate throughout that week. I'm happy to answer any questions.
Thank you. Any questions for Chief Ferguson?
I will tell you, just, you know, in, in terms of the services in Bodotoc County, we are on the heels of a recent CPR and AED event that, the training that took place at Troutville Elementary two Saturdays ago. We also have an upcoming event this weekend at Daleville Baptist Church, where there's still open registration. We have 40 folks registered for that. Those two initiatives, and we have two more that we don't have dates planned for yet, are ultimately to get those folks free AEDs at their facilities, so long as they can achieve 30 learners through the Compression and Shock Foundation, which is a foundation that's been in place for almost a decade now and has trained hundreds with us here in Bodotoc and helped provide nearly half a dozen free AEDs throughout the community. I share that with you to tell you that about three, less than three weeks ago, maybe two, two weeks and six days, we had a cardiac arrest at the Bodotoc County YMCA, where within three minutes, the, the subject had a shock delivered by an AED with immediate bystander CPR and is alive and well today. And my intention is to reunite him with the responders and hopefully bring him to see you all, if he's willing to do so, to speak to his experience because vital things are happening in the community, bystanders, our recognizing problems and reacting to those, learning CPR and learning where AEDs are, and that is all a component, components of a healthy community and part of EMS. Thank you.
Thank you very much, Chief. That story brings it home pretty, pretty solidly. And we appreciate the work that you and your teams do to keep us all safe. So that being said, is there a motion to accept this resolution?
The move?
Second.
We have a motion and a second. Any discussion or questions for Chief?
I'll just say that this is another example of the outstanding group that we have in Fire and Rescue. It really is well-managed and I'll say well-behaved. That's not the best word, but.
It's fair.
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 Well-managed and, and well-deployed group. And this is another example of it. So thank you, Jason.
Thank you.
Thank you. Any other comments? We have a motion and a second. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? That motion passes. Thank you so much, Chief. Mr. Evans, if you would come down, please? We will now address Agenda Item 14, the Consideration of Construction Management Services Agreement with SCANSKA.
Good afternoon, Madam Chair, Board members. I'd like to request an agreement for Construction Project Management, Management Services between the county and SCANSKA for the Reed Mountain Fire Department Expansion and 911 Center Complex. This is quite the, the technical project that we're, I'm getting ready to start. It's extending the Reed Mountain Fire Department approximately 10,000 square feet, 5,000 feet for the, on the first floor. It's a 10,000 square foot building, two-story building, 5,000 square foot addition for the fire department, 5,000 square feet for the 911 Center. Along with that, it's going to be a communication support building with approximately 2,600 square feet. And then with all this, we're going to be coordinating with the tower site, going across the street at Dyne X with the tower, the generator, and the, and support building there. With all this, we've decided to, to do, for the county, to do direct purchases of the power, emergency power generating systems, two 400-kilowatt generators, an ATS at the docking station. We're also going to direct purchase all the FF and E. We're going to do our own IT and wiring, as well as the access control systems. So it's quite the complex project. And in the meantime, I've got another project going on in Finn Castle. So I'm requesting some additional project management services from SCANSKA for the Reed Mountain Fire Department Expansion and 911 Center Complex. Some of these, just a few bullet points on their services are, they're going to manage, help monitor the overall project schedule in comparison to design and construction. They are going to implement an owner-direct purchase program, which basically gives us back our, the tax money if we purchase it directly. That's approximately about $100,000 savings on the project. That's an estimate because we have not put this project out to bid. They're going to assist with the procurement of all the FF and E. They're going to assist in a procurement of construction material testing services. You know, all parts of the construction have to be tested, such as concrete, rebar, and waterproofing and such. We're, they're going to report on the general contractor's adherence to the schedule. They're going to monitor and inspect all construction materials, equipment supplies delivered and accepted for compliance. So there will be there as any equipment is planned to come on to the, to the site, such as conduit, wiring, whatever, make sure that it is with, you know, it adheres to the, to the specifications. They're going to inspect installation and workmanship for compliance with, with all the approved plans and specifications, identify work not completed correctly, report that to me directly, and we'll make sure we can stop work and we don't, you know, go backwards at any point in time. And they're going to observe all test requirements by the construction documents. They're going to review the schedule of values to make sure that they are accurately reported. So when we get our pay app each month, it is exactly correct and we're not overpaying. And then they're going to assist the owner in developing a move-in plan and schedule. This is going to be a rapid project. We're hoping to, once construction starts, get it done in less than a year. So I asked for, the cost of these construction management services is $174,000. And once again, I, with the owner-direct purchase program, about 80, I mean, about 80% of that will be recouped. 80 to, I'm sorry, about 80,000 of that will get recouped. Any questions?
Any questions for Mr. Evans?
I had one question. In different parts of this proposal, there were different timeframes for people being on-site.
Yes, sir.
And I didn't know which one to, to go on.
So the one to go on is they will be required to be on-site for inspection services at least twice a week, one time per week for administrative purposes, but available five days a week. That's the reason for the little bit of confusion, if, if that's where I think you're going here, sir.
Okay, yeah, that's appendix A versus the body.
Right, yes, sir. So availability five days a week, per my discretion, two days a week mandatory for inspection services on average, and then one day for administrative services. Yes, sir.
Okay, thank you.
Other questions?
Yes, ma'am, I have a couple of questions.
Sure.
Our package, the way I read it, the, the preface to the proposed contract mentions, as you did, the court as well as the 911 Center. But the contract says nothing about the, the court. So we're going to modify this contract for.
So, so the, for the Bodotoc County Circuit Courthouse, we're already in, in the contract with SCANSKA for their construction management services for that project.
Okay. Is that contract similar to this?
That contract is similar to this in scope, but they're required to be there five days a week, period, Monday through Friday. And it's considerably more expensive.
The only, I, I think that the contract from my point of view looks, looks good. I'm curious what the base document was. Did it come from the, from the Commonwealth or, or is it an AIA contractor?
This is a, this is an amalgamation of AIA, state, and a few things that were baked in by ourselves, but it seems to have worked pretty well here. And I know my partner Jeremy Carroll has used very similar contract language successfully for this type of services as well.
Yeah, okay. It sort of favors, the way I read it, it sort of favors the contractor rather than the owner, but it's not a big deal. Like, and not to take a whole lot of time here, but on changes, it's just in the very beginning on page one, changes, subparagraph C. And this is minor, but it's sort of a, sort of a subtle suggestion of what the overall, what, what the overall sense of the project is. Changes, they only refer to increases in the consultant's time and increases in the fee, increases in the, in the schedule. It goes both ways. And I've, to me, I would have preferred the word changes rather than increases.
You're right. And that was, I think we added the otherwise equitably adjust language in order to cover that. But yeah, I could have made it a lot shorter by just saying change.
Yes, yeah. Just an observation.
Yes.
Thank you for listening. That's all I have, Madam Chair.
Other questions? Comments? Is there a motion to approve?
Some move?
Second.
We have a motion and a second. Any further discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Thank you. Mr. Campbell? Agenda item 15. Let's hear about Economic Development Week.
Going to continue all the different weeks that we got going on?
Alligators are full.
Busy, it's going to be a busy May. Lady and gentlemen of the board, I come before you to present a proclamation for Economic Development Week from May 5th through the 9th. As you know, we've had some great economic development wins here recently with Munter's expansion and also our small business program, and business continues to thrive in the county. This proclamation will help us promote economic development throughout the county, and I'd be happy to read it if the board would like.
Please.
Whereas more than 100,000 economic development or related professionals worldwide are committed to creating, retaining, and expanding top-tier opportunities that facilitate long-term equitable community growth, and whereas the economic development profession cultivates thriving neighborhoods, champions local resiliency, boosts economic prosperity, enhances the quality of life, and builds robust tax bases, and whereas economic development professionals operate throughout diverse economic environments, including rural, suburban, and urban settings, local, state, and federal governments, public-private partnerships, chambers of commerce, institutions of higher education, among many similar organizations and associations, and whereas economic development professionals serve as stewards, bridging connections among community stakeholders such as residents, business leaders, elected officials, industry executives, and educational administrations to collaborate in promoting job creation, community investment, infrastructure advancements, and an optimistic future. And whereas Bodotoc County's Department of Economic Development partners with several aligned organizations, including partners with several aligned organizations, including the International Economic Development Council, Southern Economic Development Council, Virginia Economic Developers Association, Virginia Economic Development Partnership, Renoke Regional Partnership, Renoke Regional Chamber of Commerce, and Bodotac Chamber, County Chamber of Commerce, Renoke Regional Small Business Development Center, and the Advancement Foundation, among others, to serve as a driving force in advancing economic development initiatives within the community with a steadfast commitment to fostering growth and prosperity in Bodotac County. Now, therefore be it resolved that the Bodotac County Board of Supervisors recognizes the week of May 5th through May 9th, 2025, as Economic Development Week and reminds individuals of the importance of this community celebration which supports expanding opportunities, bettering lives, and moving society forward. Reclaim this 22nd day of April, 2025.
Thank you, Mr. Campbell. Any comments or questions? I hear a motion to accept this resolution.
No move.
Second.
We have a motion and a second. Any further discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? That motion carries. Thank you, and enjoy Economic Development Week, and I'm glad that Ken will still be here with us for that. So I hope you guys really celebrate. Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Our next item is our citizen comment period for general comments. No takers. Anyone from the public that would like to make a comment? Okay, hearing none, we will move on to our last agenda item, board member comments. I'm going to ask to start that off, that we get some updates on some of our bigger projects. Mr. Evans, you were just here, would you like to come back and?
Yes, ma'am.
Share with us some updates, probably particularly on the courthouse project. I know we have some blasting in Fincastle that has occurred, so we could get an update on that.
Again, thank you. So as far as update on the courthouse project, yes, ma'am, we are blasting. We've completed our third round of blasting today along 220. The blasting has went quite well. We have approximately 17 more to go. Yeah, so basically, we blast, we test, and we see how much more blasting we need to do so we don't try to blast at all at the same time. But I'm going to skip to the pitchers here, maybe we'll make it our project administration. So currently, for the project itself, it's about 600 total submittals that go into this project. We're just now getting them started. This was, this is a Friday, this number's doubled since Friday, but we're just, like I said, getting started on approving our submittals. We've got 21 approved, 12 marked as submitted, three more reviews, and then we have 15 marks as project management review, and basically that is the members of the courthouse approving the different FFNE that goes inside that courthouse. We've had three addendums on the project, none of them have been approved. They are basically just issues of they've changed the type of refrigerant we can use in our HVAC systems, we have to change the systems a bit, and we'll see if we want to preserve some other things that were not in the contract documents. Really no major issues with any of those. But here's some pitchers. This is where we've been blasting, right outside the old community center here, just where the rocks are. These are two-ton mats that go over to cover it. These are basically just putting the mats down. So these pitchers of, we're drilling, core drilling, new weep holes in the existing retainage wall. The other weep holes were too low, they need to go above the planer boxes, not below them. So, and then obviously, we've, we've redone all the backfill for the existing retention wall. All that was, all that backfill was done incorrectly, we had to pull it all out and redo it all. So that is, on the upper end, that has been completed. We are now working on the, the lower end, the 220 side. The, the actual, wish we had some better pictures of the demo of the courthouse itself. When I looked out my window today, we were probably, that whole back section that you see there with the four windows on the left in the upper corner, that whole section is now gone. We're about 50% complete on the demo, not on the remover, removal debris, but about 50% complete on the building itself. So we're ahead of schedule, really and truly in all aspects. We're still trying to nail down a good time to move the office and hotel. The, the masons that we had picked were, got some extensive work down in North Carolina due to all the damage done over there with the weather over this past year, so that we probably won't get them up here until about June to start securing up the building. And once again, just about 50% complete demo on the building, working on the wall, we should have, we'd probably be blasting every two to three days for the next couple of weeks to finish up along 220. And other than that, just, I mean, that's, those are the, the two main areas that we're completing. Any questions?
Fantastic.
You'd be quite surprised, I don't have much difference Friday's pitcher and today's pitcher is on that upper left-hand corner, on the demo itself.
Any questions for Mr. Evans? Thank you. Ahead of schedule, sounds good.
Yes, we're, I will again say that things, we found, we found some Easter eggs along the way, but we are still, we are still plenty ahead, some behind.
Wonderful, wonderful. Mr. Henkel, do you want to talk a little bit about our communications projects?
Matt Henkel, you're Mercy Comms Manager. Excuse me. I know we've had, we're not exactly on track with this project. It's a little bit, had a few delays, but I'm proud to say that in the last 30 days, we haven't had any steps backwards. So we're doing good. To date, we've got four leases complete for the towers. We have three that are outstanding. Two of those will be towers that are going to be built, actually all three. And recently, we have, have made the decision internally, we're going to go out to bid for the construction of three new towers, one at Reed Mountain, which is part of the project with the dispatch and fire station expansion, one at Tinker Mountain, and one at the new location in Ariskany. So with that, once we have those complete, we will have all the tower sites locked down, and then we can go ahead and start doing the construction, and then hopefully this summer, we will start doing the site civil construction on the towers that we already have, the leases secured for or that we already own. So that's when we'll start breaking ground for the actual project. The equipment will be ordered, or actually has been ordered, will be delivered in late December for the actual project or the infrastructure. We're going to be doing a true-up on the radios for the first responders in the school board sometime in late May, we'll be ordering those in June as well. They will be coming in in late December as well, and then we'll stage those ready for sometime deployment in sometime in '26. Another development on a good note, next week, Motorola will be on-site, and we'll be doing site visits at all the fire stations for the fire station alerting. They will be marking and getting all the prep work that they need to do to start the construction of the fire station alerting, which should take several months to get completed. But we met last night with the, the fire chiefs, and they're pretty excited about that, and as we are as well, to get this moving, it's something that's a long time coming, and I think is an exciting part of this project. But that, to date, that's where we are. We're still securing the sites. We have the RFP getting ready to go out, hopefully the next 45 to 60 days for the, for the tower construction, and then we'll keep moving forward. Any questions?
Question? When will the tower in Ariskany be functional?
Well, it really depends...
And I'm not asking as part of the bigger communication system, but I, I see that as a double win because of the cell phone service that will be accessible for the residents up there. I just wondered what the timing for that might be and, and how we might be communicating with them about that option.
Yeah, it really depends on when we award the contract for the tower build. If we can do it early enough, we may be able to get it done, you know, permitting, you know, do all the permitting that we have to get. We may be able to get it late fall this year, but I think it may be aggressive, and maybe challenging to do a winter build in that particular area. We still have to build the road and run power to it and all that good stuff. But I would say it'd be safe to say that sometime, probably about a year from now, it would be pretty close to complete.
Thank you.
Yes, ma'am.
Other questions?
How many co-locates would we be able to handle?
Well, that depends on how we, we're going to build it for a minimum of three at Ariskany. It will be a 195-foot tower. We're not going to take that much space on it, so there's going to be plenty of space. It just depends on how beefy of the foundation and everything, we want to build the tower for how many co-locations we want, but we will build it for a minimum of three.
Other questions? Thank you.
Thank you, ma'am.
Ms. Pendleton.
If you'd like to give us, I guess, first, if we could hear about Rocky Forge.
Absolutely. So the latest update that I can give you on that is that there's just a lot going on. There's a whole lot going on. We have been meeting at least every other week for project updates. We have one plan revision in right now that's under review, that is to receive fill at the top of the mountain rather than at the base of the mountain, which cuts down in the amount of truck traffic and the amount of emissions and the amount of a lot of different things, so a value engineering adjustment based on their project team being on-site. And so that's being reviewed by our third-party consultants as well as the zoning office right now. We have the turbine, building permits have come in, we sent them back, they had a first round of review, they're back to the company for the 13 turbines and foundation drawings. So we're anticipating that those will come back in very shortly for review, and they're probably just about approvable.
Any questions about Rocky Forge? And do you have anything?
Not really. The complaint we sent you, did that get kind of?
So we do have a, we do have one complaint right now. We have 10 days to investigate it. I believe that time period is up at the end of this week. So we are conducting the investigations, we are working, you know, the applicant contractors made aware of that. We actually have a site visit scheduled to go out on the site. Staff, fire DMS folks have performed the safety training that is necessary to, you know, to be able to access the site and go through all the proper procedures, which is typical with any construction project. So we anticipate that we will get back to DEQ with response to that complaint in a timely manner.
Thank you. Any other thing on that? Can we get an update on WAWA?
Sure. I do believe that there are, that we are on the either third or fourth set of reviews, and I believe the only outstanding comments left to address are on behalf of EDOT. So if we did get in, so everything else has potentially been resolved for ready to be stamped approved. So if the next set of plans comes in and EDOT approves it, then we would have approved site plans, ready to move forward with the land disturbance permitting process, get a pre-con scheduled, but I don't have any timelines for that at the moment, but I think that's pretty imminent.
Thank you. Any other questions? Fantastic. Thank you.
You're welcome.
Any board comments? I have some events that I would like to share. This weekend, the Fincastle is the place to be. The Fincastle Library on Saturday will have an Earth Day celebration and a plant swap starts at 10:00 AM, and then there's a story trail kickoff at Big Spring Park in Fincastle at 3:00 PM. So those are a couple fun events. I want to point out that our Parks and Recreation Group is offering some community programming for all ages. One of our initiatives is to have all-age recreation. Their free yoga classes are being offered at Greenfield Recreational Park, and Jamie is taking folks on hikes and day trip adventures and pedaling on the James River. So if you want to become involved with that, go to the Bodotac VA website and look at community programming. Important date, mark your calendar, Saturday, June 14th. That is Boko Wild. That's at the Buchanan Town Park from 1:00 to 7:00. This is a free event, fishing, outdoor adventure, food trucks. Ms. Pendleton, did you hear that? Food trucks and kid games and a lot more. That's Bodotac website, Boko Wild. Virginia's Blue Ridge Regional Restaurant Week kicks off May 31st through June 8th. There will be participating restaurants all over the region, including Bodotac County. They'll invite people to explore a culinary metro mountain adventure. Shop Bodotac and our local partners are all working together to make that happen, so that's a very exciting time. And there's a lot more going on that I won't, if I say too much, we'll forget it all, but I will point you to our Getting to Know Boko website. You can also sign up for automatic notifications through our website, which Ms. Bradbury has up right now. You can sign up to get notified for all these events and more. So I thank you for this information and thank everybody for the work that goes into putting this programming together. With no further business, we will go into recess and reconvene at 6:00 PM for, we have one public hearing tonight regarding the Amsterdam District. That being said, we are in recess.